Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Lawrence City Commission on April 2nd, 2024. And now I will have Sheri go ahead and give us the rundown.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. To minimize distractions during the meeting, please silence your cell phones. For those attending virtually, please ensure you are muted and your video is off when you are not actively participating in the meeting. The city reserves the right to turn videos off or mute virtual participants. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast on the city's YouTube channel and cable channel 25. When the mayor calls for public comment, please approach the podium to indicate you wish to speak. Those participating virtually should use the raise hand function to indicate they wish to speak. Please leave your virtual hand raised until you are called on. If you have any trouble, you can send a chat, and all chats go directly to the meeting host. Please state your name before speaking, and all comments will be limited to three minutes. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Sheri. Okay, I'll go ahead and get us started with Agenda Item A. Approve the agenda. The City Commission reserves the right to amend, supplement, or reorder the agenda during the meeting. And right now, I would... Any suggestions?
I don't have any changes, sir.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Have a first and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Pass is five, zero. Item B, recognition proclamation and presentation. The first one is proclaim the month of April 2024 as Autism Acceptance Month. And I believe we have some folks here to go ahead and present that.
We're the ones making all the noise in the back.
Oh, it's all good. It's all good.
Thank you.
Would you guys like to say anything before I start?
We did. We wanted to say thank you for recognizing this. We love this community. We think that the Lawrence area definitely helps those that are differently abled, and we appreciate everything. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good deal. All right. I'll go ahead and get started. Whereas autism or autism spectrum disorder is a complex mental condition and lifelong developmental disability characterized by difficulties in a way a person communicates or interacts with others, and whereas one in 36 children in the U.S. have autism up from the previous rate of one in 44, and whereas boys are nearly four times as more likely to be diagnosed with autism than girls, and whereas autism prevalence is lower among white children than among other racial and ethnic groups, and whereas only 21% of people with disabilities, including autism, are employed, and whereas 60% of people with autism in the United States are employed after receiving state-provided vocational rehabilitation services that help individuals with autism explore possible careers, find a job, and secure needed accommodations in the workplace. Now therefore, I, Bart Littlejohn, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024, as World Autism Awareness Day, and proclaim the month of April 2024 as Autism Acceptance Month, and urge residents to be a friend and advocate to the entire autistic community, respect and support those with autism, champion acceptance, not just awareness of differences, provide meaningful opportunities for autistic individuals and their families, and act fearlessly to stand alongside the autism community in pursuit of a better world for those with autism.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. I believe the second proclamation is proclaim the month of April 2024 as Mathematics and Statistics Awareness Month. I believe we have Professor Margaret Bayer.
Yes, thank you. I'm Margaret Bayer. I am a professor of mathematics and resident of Lawrence for 36 years. Mathematics and Statistics Awareness Month has evolved, originating as Mathematics Awareness Week in 1986, but it started at KU even before that, in 1984. It is a time to increase the understanding and appreciation of mathematics and statistics. We hope to convey to all, but especially to children and their parents, that mathematics and statistics are interesting, fascinating, useful, but even magical, sometimes mysterious. You can follow Mathematics and Statistics Awareness Month on social media, where you find news, history, puzzles, problems, exhibits, and activities. In particular, the KU math department sponsors various activities, as we do every year. We've already had the KU student math competition. It was on March 27th. And a week and a half on Saturday, April 13th, we have the math and statistics competition for 3rd through 12th graders. Still time to sign up for that. We will later in the month have a Russell Brought undergraduate colloquium and workshops for 4th and 5th graders. Mathematics and statistics are of increasing importance in all walks of life, and we want to expose young people to the value and the joy of mathematics. Thank you.
Thank you, Professor Bayer. All right. Whereas mathematics is the foundation of discipline, a foundation of discipline for science and technology, and mathematical reasoning, analysis, and problem-solving are increasingly vital in preparation our youth to lead productive and responsible lives, and whereas mathematics is a living and growing discipline continually being created and discovered, the power of mathematics is revealed in richness and beauty of its intellectual structure and the diversity of its applications to almost every field of human endeavor. And whereas the beauty, challenge, and excitement of mathematics and its potential to enrich individual lives require that through mathematics education, we make its opportunities available to all of our citizens, and whereas the Joint Policy Board for Mathematics, a joint venture of the American Mathematical Society, the Mathematical Association of America, and the Society for Industrial and Applied Mathematics, was established to articulate and advocate sound public policy concerning the mathematical sciences and the field's ability to contribute to public welfare. And whereas the Department of Mathematics of the University of Kansas is dedicated to the creation, application, and teaching of mathematics and to serving mathematical needs of the community. Now therefore, I, Bart Littlejohn, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as Mathematics and Statistics Awareness Month, to be observed in the schools of City of Lawrence in recognition of the importance of mathematics and mathematics education. Thank you. All right. I believe the third one is proclaim the month of April 2024 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And I believe Jennifer Hernandez is here.
Jennifer.
Evening, Commissioners. Thank you for having me. I've brought some pens for you, as well as some calendars of our events coming up. And I will leave those here for you. Oh, thanks, Sheri. I'm a little sad that Sheri isn't timing this because I worked really hard to make it three minutes. I want to say thank you, Commissioners, for having us here this evening for this important proclamation. April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Each April is an opportunity to reflect on the serious impact that sexual violence has on all of our members of the community, literally everyone. People who directly experience sexual violence may experience depression, flashbacks, PTSD, STIs, substance use and abuse, dissociation, panic attacks, eating disorders, unwanted pregnancy, sleep disorders, suicidal ideation, and many other physical, mental, and emotional effects. The impact of sexual violence on our communities is also significant. At an estimated economic cost of $122,461 per victim over their lifetimes, this adds up to $3.1 trillion over the lifetimes of all 25 million reported victims of rape in the United States alone. The toll that sexual violence takes on individuals and their loved ones and our society cannot be ignored. Who is causing this harm? Nearly 75% of sexual violence is committed by an acquaintance or current or former intimate partner. In jail or prison, 60% of all sexual violence against inmates is perpetrated by the institution's staff. Most perpetrators are white. In our, excuse me, in our service area of Douglas, Franklin, and Jefferson Counties, 70 rapes were reported to law enforcement in 2022, leading to just four arrests. In the same year, the STA Care Center served 937 individuals. We know that reported rapes are the tip of the iceberg when it comes to sexual violence in our communities. Please note that some of us are more likely to be targeted by perpetrators of sexual violence. That includes bisexual people and other LGBTQ+ people, trans people, particularly black trans women, sex and pleasure workers, indigenous women, and women of color. We also know that people who have been victimized before are more likely to be victimized again. Additionally, laws that take away bodily autonomy, like anti-trans laws and laws that limit reproductive choice, are a form of systemic sexual violence. Rape culture pervades many aspects of our lives in advertisements, media, memes, and through the proliferation of misinformation online. We normalize rape culture when we don't intervene, and it is even more dangerous for those at higher risk of sexual violence when we have people who explicitly stated that they've engaged in sexual violence in the highest offices of our country. We have medical and legal systems that address these issues, but out of more than 60 reports of rape in 2022 to law enforcement, two of those cases were prosecuted. So what do we do to stem the flood? Primary roots that make individuals vulnerable to sexual violence include economic and housing insecurity, alcohol density, unhealthy family relationships, beliefs in male superiority and sexual entitlement, poverty and health disparities, unemployment, weak community policies against sexual violence, low community and neighborhood cohesion, prevalence of rhetoric that desperately impacts some populations over others, such as racism, sexism, heterosexism, cisgenderism, xenophobia, and others. Sexual violence is reduced when protective factors are enhanced, including quality relationships, strong community connectedness, gender equity, economic housing stability, physical and mental health equity and access, proactive community policies, and actively working to create an equitable community. What we often forget is that every single one of us, no matter who we are, can help prevent sexual violence by intervening when we see something happening, whether that's an offensive joke or someone causing physical harm. We can all hold ourselves and our fellow community members accountable for working against the systemic forces that make access to essential services and financial security unattainable. I hope that all of you will consider joining us on at least one of our events throughout Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Thanks.
Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month, S.A.A.M., calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in the community. S.A.A.M. aims to raise public awareness about sexual violence and educate communities about how to prevent it, and whereas this year's SAM campaign theme, Building Connected Communities, calls on each of us to work together to prevent sexual abuse, harassment, and assault. We believe that anyone experiences sexual violence, every community is affected, every community member is affected. And whereas more than 1 in 4 black women, 29% in the United States, were raped in their lifetime, more than 4 in 5 American Indian or Alaskan Native women, 84.3%, have experienced violence in their lifetime, 1 in 3 Hispanic women, 34.8%, reported unwanted sexual contact in their lifetime, 32.9% of adults with intellectual disabilities have also experienced sexual violence, and 47% of all transgender people have been sexually assaulted at some point in their lives. And whereas we must strive to build more connected, respectful, and inclusive communities to promote our collective well-being and protect against the risk of sexual violence, we believe all of our communities will be safer and stronger by making them more equitable for people of all gender identities and sexual orientations, races, ethnic backgrounds, ages, faith, face, and abilities. And whereas the Building Connected Communities campaign is an opportunity for our community to join with others around the world in committing to prevent sexual abuse, assault, and harassment. Now therefore, I, Bart Littlejohn, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and encourage our residents to join advocates and communities across the county in taking action to prevent sexual violence and harassment. Each day is an opportunity to create a change for the future. Okay. Next one is proclaim the month of April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And I believe Bev Turner.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for having us. My name is Bev Turner. I'm the Executive Director of the Children's Advocacy Center of Douglas County, and with me is our Board Chair, the Honorable, she hates it when I say that, Paula Martin, and also present is DA Valdez, who serves on our board. April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month, when we recognize the importance of families and communities working together to prevent child abuse and neglect. The Children's Advocacy Center of Douglas County coordinates the multidisciplinary team that responds to child abuse reports. Our multidisciplinary team includes law enforcement, Department for Children and Families, the District Attorney's Office, mental and medical services, and victim advocates, such as our partners at the CARE Center, all working together to support and improve the journey for a child and family when there is a disclosure of child abuse. These professionals work together in a collaborative approach that results in effective, efficient, and improved child-centered outcomes. The CAC provides a safe, child-friendly environment for the forensic interview and connects the family with specialized medical and mental health services. We work to ensure that families have access to these tools on their path to healing while removing the financial and transportation barriers. Thank you to the City of Lawrence for the past financial support that contributed to the opening of the CAC as the only child advocacy center serving children in Lawrence and the surrounding communities. Today, we are here as a community to honor the courage of the children we serve and encourage all caring adults to report concerns of child maltreatment. Thank you.
Thank you. Whereas children are our nation's most vulnerable members, as well as our nation's most valuable resources, helping to shape the future of Lawrence, Kansas, and whereas childhood trauma can have a long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects throughout an individual's lifetime and impact future generations of their family, and whereas childhood trauma, including abuse and neglect, is a serious problem affecting every community in the U.S., and finding a solution requires input and action from everyone, and whereas protective factors are a condition that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children, and whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families, and whereas children who live in families with access to concrete, economic, and social supports are less likely to experience abuse and neglect, and whereas we acknowledge that to solve the public health issue of abuse and neglect, we must work together to change the hearts and mindsets through storytelling and sharing, centering the needs of families, break down bias and barriers, inspire action from expected and unexpected partners in prevention. Prevention remains the best event for our children and families. Now therefore, I, Bart Littlejohn, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Okay. Looks like the final one is for National Public Health Week, and Jonathan Smith.
Evening.
Evening.
Evening, Mayor, Commissioners, city staff, fellow citizens of Lawrence. My name is Jonathan Smith. I'm the Executive Director at Lawrence Douglas County Public Health, and I was told to only have three minutes, so I wrote some stuff down instead of winging it, so I'm gonna just jump right into it.
Okay.
We appreciate the opportunity to celebrate and bring awareness to the work that our team at Lawrence Douglas County Public Health does through leading change to advance health for all. I sincerely want to thank each one of our team members for their commitment to public health, and it's truly an honor for me to witness firsthand the positive impact that they're having on our community each day. The American Public Health Association has named the theme for this year's National Public Health Week as Protecting, Connecting, and Thriving: We're All Public Health. When you take a moment to stop and think about that theme, it almost feels as if that theme was created specifically for us. So us meaning Lawrence Douglas County Public Health, us meaning our community partners, us meaning our local government, and all of our neighbors who get to call Lawrence and Douglas County home. So I'd like to spend some time tonight highlighting how we collectively live out the theme of National Public Health Week. The first part of that theme is protecting, so we share a commitment with everyone here to promoting safe, secure, strong, and welcoming neighborhoods. We protect future and current generations by enabling equitable access to public health clinic services, conducting disease investigations, reducing the risk of predictable harm to children in daycare settings, assessing and monitoring population and environmental health, investigating, diagnosing, and addressing health hazards and their root causes. Second part of that theme is connecting. We connect with numerous community organizations and community members to develop and implement our community health plan, which is focused on improving outcomes specific to Lawrence and all of Douglas County, such as access to health services, birth outcomes, food security, anti-poverty, behavioral health, and safe and affordable housing. Additionally, we're firmly committed to connecting with the City of Lawrence and Douglas County to implement a place for everyone, the plan to end chronic homelessness in our community. The third part of that theme is thriving, so we promote the growth and prosperity of families throughout Lawrence and Douglas County by providing tailored family support services related to nutrition counseling, breastfeeding support, developmental screenings, WIC services, parental education, and connection to prenatal care. And lastly, the last part of that theme for National Public Health Week is the term, or the saying, "We are all public health." So when you take a deep breath, realize that we're all breathing the same air, we're all walking the same streets, and we all have a shared commitment and a shared role in creating abundant and equitable opportunities for good health. So we're all public health. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jonathan. All right. Whereas the week of April 1st through 7th, 2024, is National Public Health Week, and the theme is Protecting, Connecting, and Thriving: We're All Public Health. And whereas the goal of National Public Health Week is to educate policymakers and the public about issues that are important to the health and overall well-being of the people in the United States, and whereas public health provides services that improve overall health, educate people about factors that influence health, address health problems and hazards that impact the community, and whereas public health professionals collaborate with a diverse group of community partners, including city and county staff, education officials, healthcare providers, and other organizations who share the same goal of creating abundant and equitable opportunities for good health, and whereas efforts to adequately support public health will continue to transform our healthcare delivery system to ensure that whole-person care is accessible to everyone regardless of social status, and whereas National Public Health Week celebrates the legacy of the public health system and its successes. Now therefore, I, Bart Littlejohn, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of April 1st through April 7th, 2024, as National Public Health Week, and I encourage all Lawrence residents to take part in this week by supporting Lawrence Douglas County Public Health and public health professionals and the communities that they serve.
Thank you.
All right. Give an opportunity for everybody to go. That's quite a few proclamations. All right. Moving us on, Item C, general public comment. The public is allowed to speak on issues or items that are not scheduled for discussion on the agenda. Comments should be limited to issues and items germane to the business of the governing body. The Commission will not discuss or debate these items, nor will the Commission make decisions on items presented during this time. Members of the public will be limited to three minutes for comments.
My name's Dan Katy. I had an opportunity today to talk to a business owner in downtown Lawrence, and I asked him, I said, "What's going on with the homeless problem? Is it getting better?" He said, "Well, it seems like they're playing whack-a-mole with it." And I said, "Well, can I run me through what's happened?" He said, "In 2020, we had ordinances in place that had been there for 15 years that were working to keep it under control. The City Commission at that time decided to make amendments to those ordinances, and you can all see now the result of that. The homeless problems spiraled out of control, so the solution seems to be, let's create a problem, and then we'll spend millions of dollars, the taxpayers' money, to try to fix it, and it doesn't work. You need to go back and look at what was working before. You know, you can make a mistake, but it takes real leadership to admit you made a mistake and go back and fix it." Thank you.
Any additional? Any additional public comment here in the room?
Good evening. I kind of follow on the heels of this gentleman here. I've been a North Lawrence resident for probably 15 years. Prior to that, I grew up in North Lawrence as a child. I never experienced anything of what's going on today. The homeless population since 2010 has tripled in that area. And since then, we have had so, we've had several break-ins. We've had people start fires on our property. And we've had our chickens and ducks have had foot snares wrapped around their feet with either fish hooks at the end to make sure it gets in that leg. And we've had to cut them loose. We have called the police. They come out, they make their reports, just like every other time. So my point is, why can we not find something that's going to work and keep it at a minimum where everybody is happy with this? Because what's going on now is not working. It is not. And I can't even go downtown with my granddaughter. I can't let her go downtown by herself without being worried of her being attacked, threatened, chased. And just think as a woman, how you feel going downtown by yourself and then being approached for money, and you decline, and then they get belligerent. So if that was your mother, granddaughter, sister, aunt, whoever, how would you feel if they came back to you and said, "Let me tell you what happened"? And I also have been in contact with several business owners downtown who do not want to be mentioned because of the backlash they fear that will come with that. So, and I respect their privacy, and they say the same. You know, "We don't get the business like we used to. We come out and there somebody camp in front of our door." You know, "Human waste is everywhere. That's not sanitary." And, you know, the parks are littered with debris of trash, needles, broken bottles. Have you guys even been to those areas of the levee that run clear to, that run from Second Street and go all the way around? Have you visited those sites? If not, I invite you guys to come out and go with me, and we'll go on a tour. And we will walk that whole levee, and I will show you what I'm talking about. Let's just get it cleaned up, and let's find something that's gonna work for everybody. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah. I'm not a public speaker. I apologize in advance, and I'm terrified to be up here, but I really want to address you all. I had emailed each of you individually, and thank you, Commissioner Finkeldie and Mr. Mayor. I'd heard back from you guys, so I just, I'm opting for a public forum despite my terror at this point. So my name is Sarah. I live here in town, and I'm just gonna dive right in. I've never spoken these words in a public forum. I don't participate in open dialogue that fills our local social media. I'm choosing to aim my words at the source for effect and not drama. This is my town. My family chose it as our centering point in 1981, the day before the Kmart tornado. That was a great welcome. When I was a very young child, all my jobs, as well as my spouses, are in Lawrence. We're both in healthcare. We're homeowners, business owners, parents of school-aged children. We care deeply for all who reside here. We pay taxes here, we shop here, we work here, we live here, we are invested here. I encourage change and growth in all areas of my life, and this includes the town in which I live. However, the changes I've witnessed over the past five years are astounding. 10 years ago, I spent nearly every nice day walking from the library to Great Harvest for cinnamon twists and the go-to play in the park for hours with my little children. Now, I would never. I don't want my children to even return here after college as I can't imagine raising a family here now. I don't even want my teens to stroll mass with their friends while the sun is still up. Ladies and gentlemen, what are we doing? And what are the long-term goals for our community? Are we aimed solely at the care of those who don't have homes at the expense of all who do? Whose voices are you choosing to listen to while ignoring others? Not saying these choices you face are easy and that they're full of nuance. They are full of nuances and a thousand shades of gray. But you need to hear from me, a longtime resident who cares deeply about the space we share. Let my voice remind you that I and all who live here are counting on you to make this a place where we can exist reasonably without fear for our safety. Looking to my own future, I'd always imagined I'd retire and live out my years here. This is not a foregone conclusion anymore. Much of this depends on what you folks do now. We will soon reach a point where the town and its reputation is unrecoverable. That point in time is fast approaching. We've drifted over the years with compassion as our guiding motivation. This compassion is a lovely thing, yet dangerous without logic. Compassion alone can lead to destruction. We, the City of Lawrence, cannot afford to house and care for the growing homeless population that is sojourning to our city. We don't have the tax base to adequately support the infrastructure of our community as it is even without this. Not just referring to the direct cost of the Palat Village, the staff to oversee it, the extra cost to increase police presence, the extra cost of intelligent care at LMHED. No, I'm looking at the bigger picture of cost. Residents that are here and they're looking to leave, potential residents that don't want to come, businesses who will close and not reopen. How does a community recover from, "Lawrence used to be a great place to live, but now there's no way." I'm not sure we do recover from that. My teenager, along with a carload of friends, fled from downtown as police and rescue swarmed down by the library a few weeks ago. The girls, driven by a newly relocated mom from Scottsdale, Arizona, had been circling mass trying to find a place for a sweet 16 birthday outing. The mother was horrified by what she's seen in our town in the brief two years here, and weirdly, this is embarrassing. Why is this my response? I've always been proud of my quirky, funky town.
Sarah?
Yes.
I believe that's time.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Alrighty. My name is Dr. Justin Spees. In November of 2023, I filed a lawsuit against the Lawrence City Commission and individually against Lisa Larson and Courtney Shipley as mayors for First Amendment free speech violations and 14th Amendment equal protection violations for censoring me while I spoke at these meetings during general public comment, and then they had me removed by law enforcement. Shortly after I filed this, the city's attorney filed a motion to dismiss my entire lawsuit. On December 29th, LJ World published an article about the city filing their motion to dismiss the case. In February, an injunctive relief hearing was held, and yesterday, the judge in the case issued her ruling on the hearing and the city's motion to dismiss. If local newspapers around here even bother to report on this, it won't be unbiased, so I want to provide everyone with an update on the case and the judge's rulings. I am the plaintiff in this case, and the city is the defendant. So reading now from the docket text. Memorandum in order. Defendant's motion is denied as the plaintiff's facial and as-applied forum status claims, retaliation claim, and equal protection claim. Defendant's motion to dismiss defendant's city commission for lack of subject matter jurisdiction is denied. Defendant's motion to dismiss Larson and Shipley on the basis of qualified immunity is denied. End quote. Without qualified immunity, Larson and Shipley now can be held individually liable for my First Amendment retaliation claim, my equal protection claim, and my as-applied forum status claim. The judge also ruled that I was engaged in First Amendment protected speech each time I was censored and removed at these city commission meetings. Overall, anyone with a law degree will tell you that 90% of my claims are moving forward with only 10% of the initial lawsuit being dismissed with this ruling. And I'll provide updates here as the case proceeds. Looks like I got a little remaining time here, so I thought I'd read from an article here to show once again how wrong you COVID idiots were during COVID. This is from Yahoo News, published January 10th, 2024. Fauci to Congress: Six-Foot Social Distancing Guidance Likely Not Based on Data. In closed-door congressional testimony, former chief White House medical advisor Anthony Fauci said that federal social distancing guidance during the pandemic was likely not based on any data. Imagine that. Imagine that. And conceded that the lab-leak hypothesis of COVID-19's origins isn't a conspiracy theory. Imagine that. Fauci's comments came during the second of two seven-hour rounds of transcribed but non-public testimony before the House Select Committee on the Coronavirus Pandemic. The Fed's off-repeated six-foot rule informed numerous state and local pandemic restrictions, including mask mandates and capacity limitations at businesses. So you guys were wrong about pretty much every, actually everything with COVID, from masks to vaccines to social distancing. The party of science is a party of fucking morons.
Time.
And we all had to listen to you.
Time, Mr. Spees. All right. Not seeing any.
Hi, my name is David Bastin. Just had a few questions. I was wanting to know when the Balancing Act was gonna be back online. I know you guys are right in the middle of the budget stuff, so I was just wanting to get a rough update on when that was gonna come back online so people can participate in that. Let's see, I had somebody tell me that the city was looking into paying to save like the brick roads and the brick sidewalks. But on the other hand, it makes other residents pay for their sidewalks to get replaced. I didn't look into that personally, but I don't know if that's a fact or not on the city paying for that stuff. But I do know they charge homeowners to, for their sidewalks when they need redone. Oh, another thing I wanted to ask. I know last year, we had discussed a little bit about getting some extra help for the seniors beyond the Homestead Act. And I think, if I remember right, they were gonna try to come up with something by the end of 2023, and I've never heard anything else about that. So, um, let's see. And then another thing. I was wanting to know, how is it possible that the city can help, in this instance, pay $8,500 of somebody's water bill and help them with payments, but then another person with, let's say, a $1,500 water bill, they wanted all of their money upfront? So it's kind of discrimination or whatever you want to call it when you're helping one and not helping another. I don't know the details behind it, but I know those specifics on those two things for a fact. And I didn't know if this is possible or not, but on, if there's any way to make a sales tax increase to help property tax owners, which would in turn basically help renters and everything, all in the same, in the same thing. So I didn't know if that's even a possibility or if we have to try to go about helping all the people with the property tax in another manner. But, and I know we have special tax for public transit and affordable housing.
Time.
Time, Mr. Bastin. Thank you.
So I'm gonna ask that we, as a city, adjust and have a camera facing every city staff person and every commissioner in this room during the meeting and have that on the screen at the same time. Because we can tell. I can tell what makes your city attorney uncomfortable, for damn sure. And I can tell what makes a commissioner very uncomfortable as well. The citizens deserve to see that, especially after the way they've seen the way you treated people out here. We're just getting started, folks. I told you a long time ago that I stood up for him because he was gonna be the first one to fall. We're just getting started, folks. Buckle up. You brought this on yourselves. We're just getting started, folks. Now that qualified immunity's been ripped once, I wonder how many more times it can be pulled? Good eye contact. The public has rights. The public has always had rights to address their grievances with their government. You guys earned everything that's coming. They earned it for you, with you. I'm gonna spend the last minute and a half talking about the government change that needs to happen here. Because when we come in here and we are not allowed to say, "Craig, you suck", I'm out of order technically, right? Technically, if I say that, am I not out of order?
You're verging.
You should say, "I'm out of order," right?
You're verging on it.
I'm sorry?
You're verging on it.
Right. That's my point. But the reality is, is he runs everything. It takes three of these folks up here to get together to overrule anything he wants to do. But we can't even address him in this room. He doesn't have to take a meeting with the public. Right? Tell me I'm right, folks. Shake your fucking heads. I'm right. He doesn't have to take a meeting, and he doesn't. And he doesn't have to change until three of you all get together and vote in this room to make it change. That's the only way that anything changes over there. So you guys are null unless three of you come together and make it change. That's why we, as the people, need to change this form of government to one that's actually accountable to the people. We need a directly elected mayor. We need to shit-can the city manager position or tone it down to where it is completely subservient to the directly elected mayor. That way, the people have the right.
Time.
Not seeing any additional public comment in the room. Sherry, is there any public comment online?
Sherilyn Wells. Sherilyn Wells. Kevin Elliott.
Hello, Commissioner. I'm going to let you know that I am not a fan in any way, shape, or form of anything Dr. Spees has said. But this is, he's a member of our community, and he has the right to speak. I don't always agree with how Michael O'Reilly presents his information to you, but he's a member of our community, and he has the right to speak. I'm disappointed that the city commission is not in favor of the First Amendment when they're uncomfortable with the speech. I know that commissioners, no longer on the commission, actually made up lies and included me in them when they tried to silence Mr. O'Reilly. I'm just going to ask that the city commission be more mindful of the citizens, even the ones you don't want to hear from. As far as the unhoused population, I'd like to thank the city for continuing and going on a positive path. It's too little, but it's the right step. You've got the right people in place. Now, if we can just kind of step aside the private deals that our city manager and Jill Jellicoe made at the county and start getting more of the people involved, we'll do a lot better. And I hope you hear that message. I've given that message consistently for a year. We need to include the community more and the administration less. Thank you.
Sherilyn Wells. I've also sent a chat with no response, Mayor. So do you want to move on, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyone else?
That's it online.
Okay. Bring it back. Okay. Moving us on to Item D, Consent Agenda. Items on a consent agenda are considered under one motion and proved under one motion. Members of the governing body may remove items for separate discussion if desired. Members of the public may remove items identified as quasi-judicial, always have a problem with that one, for a separate discussion if desired. Members of the public will be limited to three minutes for comments. Would any of the commission like to remove any item? Would any of the commission like to remove the quasi-judicial item? Or items? Not seeing any? All right. Would any of the public like to remove here? Any of the quasi-judicial items? Not seeing any? And I guess the same question for those online. Not seeing any, and I guess the same question for those online. Would any of the public there like to move any of the quasi-judicial items?
There's no public comment, Mayor.
Okay. All right. Bringing this back.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second the motion.
I have a first and a second. All of those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
And none opposed passes five zero. Okay. Moving us on to the agenda. First agenda item, receive an update on Injuju Wahobe and the project's progress in Council Grove, Kansas from Dr. Jay Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'm happy to, I think we have a PowerPoint Okay. Sorry, sent that to Ashley earlier today, and she confirmed it would be here. But in any case, I just wanted to remind us all that we, oh.
Oh, there it is.
There we are. We last gathered in late August of last year for the return of the Rock event. We had about four hundred or so come to participate in that event, and I wanted to once again thank the city for all.
Excuse me, Mr. Johnson. Could everyone please be quiet while he's presenting? It sound carries in here, so we can pretty much hear from every corner, so if you would give him that due respect. Thank you.
Wanted to thank the city for all of its support in the return and the relocation of Injuju Wahobe. Next slide, please. Sorry, I guess I do have control. On August 30th, we moved the Rock from Lawrence to Council Grove successfully, and the Rock sat in storage for the last several months, and then was moved from the Morris County yard to Alagoa Park on March 20th, and it is now securely in its new home. The rest of the construction project that is planned for Alagoa Park is in progress, and soon we will be sending out Save the Date announcements for June 22nd, where we'll have a dedication ceremony of the Rock in its new location. And just a reminder to everyone that we are still in the process of working with the City of Lawrence on reinterpretation of Robinson Park. We are creating panels that we will be working with city staff on approval and installation of those, as we had agreed with the city to, as a part of our project with the Mellon Foundation funding. And we continue working on re-envisioning Robinson Park. It's now a very nice, flat surface for something new to happen in the park, and so our next event will be on April 21st, beginning at the park at 3:00 PM, and then moving to Lawrence Public Library for further discussion. We have promised to provide the city with a report of the findings of all of our community engagement, and we will have that to you in a final report from us in October.
Okay.
Happy to answer. Any questions?
Short and sweet. Any questions for Mr. Johnson?
You said June 22nd is?
Twenty-first.
June 22nd is the dedication ceremony at Alagoa Park.
Okay.
Yep.
Getting that down.
Could somebody send us some information on that?
We certainly will. We have a Save the Date announcement, and we should be sending that out within the next week.
Great. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
That's great.
All right. And this was just to receive information, so have any questions?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it.
Public comment, I guess?
Public comment.
I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Public comment on Injuju Wahobe here in the room? Not seeing any? Sherry, any online?
No, Mayor.
Okay, bringing it back to us. All right. I will move us on to our next item. Sorry, my scroll is not going as fast as I want. And that will be, consider authorizing city manager execute supplement number four to the engineering services agreement with Daik Wells Architecture Incorporated in the amount of two million, two million nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars for design, construction phase services for the MSO project, campus phase one project,
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Melissa Seaman, Director of Municipal Services and Operations for the city. I'm really happy to be here tonight. I get to the pleasure of introducing the MSO campus update to you tonight, and I wanted to take a minute on behalf of our nearly three hundred employees that report daily to a multitude of facilities within our city. This includes treatment plants to our traffic maintenance shop that is in a neighborhood setting, to our solid waste facilities, which are in the middle of a floodway. These facilities have received what I would call basic maintenance for decades. Additionally, these facilities have not been expanded to meet the growth of the City of Lawrence or its infrastructure for over fifty years. Since beginning my work here in 2022, I've been concerned with the significant deficiencies of our non-plant facilities, and I have been working closely to find a way to address these with our MSO team for our community. I wanted to share a few of those deficiencies tonight before I turn this over. Here's an overview of the concerns that I have as your Director of Municipal Services. Our facilities are not compliant with city building codes for a variety of reasons. These includes things like exceeding maximum occupancy standards, non-compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, as well as structural and mechanical deficiencies. We are also not compliant with federal stormwater requirements by having chemical storage in a floodway, lubricants and fluids dripping onto the ground within a floodway, and fuel islands, fuel islands for our fleet within a floodway. Additionally, our wash bays are not compliant with stormwater standards. We are also significantly undersized to perform safely our required duties, whether it's fleet, field, or solid waste. Split reporting sites lead to managerial challenges and a workforce that has divergent culture. Failing to live up to the strategic plan for engaged and empowered teams is yet another concern. Without data facilities and technologies, we struggle to support the critical boots-on-the-ground work. Having facilities that are not energy efficient also do not provide for the deployment of electric charging stations also hits on the commitment of sustainability that we're not meeting. Our facilities don't promote efficient and effective processes or service delivery. Lastly, our facilities make it increasingly difficult to attract and retain talent with our working conditions that people will observe upon interview, and they see it as a distant future for change. Last spring and summer, I had the pleasure of working with my leadership team, as well as the Finance Department and the City Manager's Office to bring forward a CIP that allowed us to consider efficiencies in how we are moving forward with the campus project. That work allowed us to fund the solid waste portion of the project, but left the central maintenance garage without a funding strategy. This was hard to share with our team, who must work with garage doors up, whether it's summer or winter, to service large equipment that simply does not fit in the garage. We have continued to work together with our internal and external stakeholders, Daik Wells and McCowen Gordon, who are here tonight, to reimagine the project. What we bring you tonight for consideration reduces total costs, moves up the timeline for completion, and will provide the city with facilities that eliminate all the concerns that I just shared. And now I will introduce Andy Enz, our engineer on this project.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Andy Enz, Engineering Program Manager for the Municipal Services and Operations Department. I will be presenting an update on the MSO campus project with the Daik Wells Architecture Design Team and the McCowen Gordon Construction Management Team. Here's the agenda for tonight's presentation. We'll start with the MSO campus project background and needs. We'll review the information from the last time we presented an update to the commission, and show how we revised the site layout to increase efficiency and reduce total project costs. We'll review key sustainability features of the MSO campus and how the project will be phased. We'll present the estimated cost and timeline of the project, and how this will impact the 2025 through 2029 CIP. Finally, we'll review the scope of the requested commission action tonight. With that, I'll pass it off to Dan McGinn with Daik Wells.
Hi, Dan McGinn, Daik Wells. Wanted to take a few minutes and talk about the need for the Municipal Services and Operations Campus. We were initially hired to develop a master plan for fourteen divisions within MSO, and after some initial test fits, it made the most sense to focus on three major facilities, which you can see listed on the left, left. First, the MSO building, which includes streets, stormwater, water distribution, wastewater collections, traffic inspections, engineering, and administration. Second, the central maintenance garage, and third, the solid waste division building. So day-to-day interaction between these three facilities led us to recommend that they be co-located. Current staff going out to the campus is two hundred and forty-nine, with projected thirty-year growth to three hundred and thirty-eight, and current fleet count is three hundred and fifty, with projected thirty-year growth to four hundred and twenty. So we've reported this in the past, but the need for the campus here is dire. Facility size, site size, and deferred maintenance are the three key issues that Andrew Cooper will talk about here shortly, and the fourth critical issue is flood risk. As you know, solid waste, central maintenance garage, streets, stormwater, and the fueling station are located near each other at Eleventh and Haskell. And the bluish-purple area you can see in this, the site plan, is the hundred-year flood plain, and then the reddish-orange overlay is the actual floodway, which is designed to be active in a flooding event. It's the area that is designed and projected to carry fast water and debris during a flood. So I've been practicing for thirty-five years, and I can honestly say I've never seen a municipal building or a fuel station operating in a floodway. The big issue here is that the city code is clear that new construction or improvements are prohibited within the floodway. Even if it were allowed, we wouldn't recommend it for safety reasons and for the substantial risk that key city services located in this area would not be able to respond in an emergency. So these crews are first responders. They keep the city running, and they're in exactly the wrong area. Lawrence isn't the only municipality dealing with the issue. In 2017, heavy rain caused flooding, which took out the City of Leewood's entire Parks and Recreation Department fleet, disrupting their operation and forcing them to split the department, temporarily relocating into other Leewood facilities. It's not a matter of will this happen here, it's a matter of when, and I'm going to turn it over to Andrew Cooper to talk about the existing conditions we witnessed during our analysis.
Evening, Commissioner. Andrew Cooper, Authority Architects, Austin, Minnesota. Perhaps the most critical thing that we do at the onset of a master plan project is getting to see where staff lives, what they're working with in terms of facilities and infrastructure, see how they live and how they work on a day-in, day-out basis. Safety, overcrowding, and compliance issues are common in things that we see in our initial visits. What we saw at Lawrence was certainly eye-opening. Staff worked exceptionally hard to utilize facilities that were severely undersized for equipment and their day-to-day work activities. The structures onsite inefficiently located on an environmentally compromised location, which really limited the ability for staff to adapt to new trends in the municipal service industry. Critical equipment is located almost entirely outdoors with limited ability to work within environmentally controlled spaces. That ability to work safely and effectively indoors is compromised by the indoor spaces that are present, lacking proper size, lacking proper lighting, lacking proper ventilation for staff to work around very complicated pieces of equipment. When more advanced work is required to keep that equipment in service, the equipment must wait for an extended period of time outdoors to wait for that staff and space availability. These two photos here are just illustrating typical conditions that we saw. The indoor space generally only available for one vehicle and a few staff to work on it, and then the outdoor storage of vehicles awaiting service, and when you store those vehicles, waiting for service outdoors, the service that is needed is further compromised. On the next slide, you'll see that the space deficiencies are not only in equipment areas, but also in people areas. Office conditions are being utilized to the fullest extent possible. Personal workspaces are located in any area available, and often in original functions that were not intended for people. Office space being carved out of functions such as part storage is common, which then reduces the ability for staff to actually store critical inventory, and then reduces that ability to perform the required daily tasks. These spaces also lack the quality required to recruit and retain a healthy staff in today's competitive job market. Facilities also lack appropriately sized and code-compliant gathering and meeting spaces for staff. The example you see here is of the solid waste muster meeting. That really only accommodated about half of the staff in a room actually only intended for about twelve to sixteen people tops, not the forty that you see in this photo, or the eighty that is actually required to have the morning muster meeting in that division. The next slide will illustrate some of the interior space conditions that we saw during our tours as well. These interior space conditions really impact how worker and occupant health and safety really work on a day-to-day basis. These hazardous conditions, when present daily, really impact how staff is able to deliver that high level of service that is expected within the community. The picture on the right illustrates how deferred maintenance, as previously mentioned, on an interior workspace, had turned a previously functional office space into a nearly uninhabitable, simple storage space. The picture on the left of the central maintenance garage illustrates how the overcrowding of that facility is a daily occurrence, not just staged for when we were visiting, but a day-in and day-out typical condition for central maintenance. That crowding really compromises how staff can safely maneuver between pieces of equipment in this crowded condition, but also how are they able to perform that service effectively? Some of the samples of deficiencies you see in that photo include a lack of height for proper lifting. There's no continuous safe circulation space between equipment for staff to maneuver that would eliminate collisions and/or tripping hazards, and then the lack of proper mechanical, electrical, and lighting systems for vehicle service areas are just not compatible for the facility. The next slide is just a further case study of the central maintenance garage, for example. In addition to what we have already illustrated, a key consideration here is that the building can actually not physically hold the equipment that the city owns. At any given moment, each available space in that building is occupied with the equipment needing service, and there's also a long line of equipment waiting outdoors to get into an open bay once ready. When larger equipment does need service, such as a ladder truck or large plow trucks, it is common to have the doors being left open, and that's regardless of time of year. Additional issues include the lack of separated support functions, so that includes fluid storage and port storage that really helps those services be executed efficiently during daily activities. And because this facility is so compact, it needs to be filled with vehicles, there's little space left over for the people that are actually performing that service. So there's a lack of office space, there's a lack of training space, there's a lack of locker and break space. To put that kind of size context in perspective, the next slide illustrates the current footprint of the central maintenance garage that we see on the left-hand side there versus the proposed plan that is on the right-hand side. The proposed plan was programmed to meet minimum standards within the industry and best practices as we look toward the future service delivery on how vehicles and equipment are serviced in a municipal operation. The spaces here accommodate safe vehicle circulation in and out of the building, as well as planned people movements and support spaces and staff amenities. well as planned people movements and support spaces and staff amenities. The result of that programming is a facility that is nearly seven times larger than the existing facility to support the maintenance demands of the city for now and into the future. Now to bring what that looks like back into context on the current site, the next slide illustrates how that proposed program actually would fit on the current site. You see the existing central maintenance garage on the left and the proposed maintenance garage on the right. Now, the existing facility is not in the floodway, but you could see that the new facility would be in the floodway. And not only in the floodway, it would actually overspill the site boundaries, therefore really necessitating that this would be a facility that needs to be relocated. Now, the following slide really does summarize, well, we think, the need for MSO's campus relocation. And this matrix we prepared and have shared several times here is really based on our evaluation of the existing conditions and the space programming and master planning that we did at the onset project. As you can see here, there's major deferred maintenance, as previously noted, on all the existing facilities that really, even if performed, as mentioned previously, would at best meet only minimum operational standards while not really addressing any key efficiency and long-term safety concerns. Every MSO division is critically undersized that we evaluated for current and projected staffing for service delivery. Each existing site will have significant limitations to accommodate forecasted needs, even if there wasn't a floodway or floodplain restriction. As Dan had mentioned, MSO staff and operators, they are first responders. They're those key divisional functions that need to respond quickly to a bench, such as flooding, of the highest potential to be impacted by such an event. So really looking at how that these functions can be relocated to another site to serve the city long-term was really a priority at the onset of the master plan. Now, I'm going to turn it back over to Andy. Thank you.
So Andrew referenced previous meetings that we've presented to the commission. This slide summarizes the key commission meetings and actions for the MSO campus over the past seven years. The concept of a consolidated campus was first presented to the commission in April of 2017. And then in May of 2019, the commission approved the recommendation to utilize the former farmland or mediation site for the campus. The city engaged Dake Wells in October of 2019 to design the MSO campus project, and then the city selected McCown Gordon as the construction manager for the project in December 2023. Alex is up next.
Hello, everyone. I'm Alex Reeves with Dake Wells Architecture, and I'm here to talk about the overall design of the MSO campus, starting with a plan that we presented to the city mid-2023. I'll go over that quickly before we present the new proposed site plan. As Dan outlined previously, prior to the development of this site plan that you see on screen, the design team alongside city management underwent a process of determining which workgroups were most necessary to go on the site, which ones could group up, and the overall phasing of all of those buildings on the site. The design team, the design that came from that analysis had four total phases. Phase one is the Fuel Island marked one on the site plan, and then the long MSO building marked two on the site plan. Phase two is the central maintenance garage, which is marked three on the site plan. Phase three is the solid waste facility marked four on the site plan, including a number of canopies for parking that's marked five. The last phase on the site plan is that large condition vehicle storage building marked six on the site plan. During the development of this plan, the design team also took part in a few rounds of community engagement with folks from the surrounding neighborhoods, which we believe led to a better overall design. Before this site plan was developed, we had shown the neighborhood a different arrangement that had the long skinny MSO building on the western portion of the site, which was a major concern for the community for various reasons. From their feedback, we relocated the MSO building to the eastern portion of the site and proposed a few additional features to address the community's concerns. For instance, we included an acoustic wall at the entry at 19th and O'Connell to shield from the noise from the trucks entering the facility and large earth berms using onsite cut to further shield the neighborhood from the sights and sounds of the campus that are landscaped. As the design team was developing this site plan, we were also further developing our sustainable features that we saw the project had an opportunity to incorporate, which I will talk about more in detail in a few slides. However, as we were developing this plan, and in particular, just after the presentation we gave to the city in 2023, the effects of escalation were beginning to be more apparent. This prompted the design team to look into ways to become more efficient and reduce the overall timeline of the project to get workers into the new facilities as soon as possible and out of their current less ideal conditions. One area that we had in mind to look into was the large 100,000-square-foot condition vehicle storage building marked six on the site. We wanted to find a way to right-size that facility and a way to separate that from the MSO building. Because of the nature of that parking facility, it made us have to have a really long skinny MSO building, which is a little bit inefficient for various reasons. We also wanted to consider if it was possible to further consolidate the phases. This has four phases overall, and we wanted to see if we could trim that down a little bit more to reduce the impact of escalation due to the spread-out nature of the construction. We also wanted to reduce the overall site development as much as possible and touch less of the site. This led us to the new site plan on the next slide. The biggest change that we are proposing with this new site plan is the consolidation of the Phase Two Central Maintenance Garage building and the Phase Three Solid Waste Building into one building. This greatly reduces the construction timeline down to only two phases total rather than four and the escalation that comes along with it. By compacting the two phases together, we were able to also swap the MSO building on the site with the new Phase Two building to get the Phase One MSO building closer to the entry, so we're not constructing as many roads down the hill on day one. We also proposed a different strategy for the condition vehicle storage. Instead of one large 100,000-square-foot facility built far off in the future, we proposed building space for the most critical pieces of the fleet to be built during day one marked four on the MSO building. We also designed the shop spaces to double-curve as parking in the Phase One building. This allowed us to reconfigure the MSO building to be more compact and separate from the parking structure, reducing the overall circulation and allowing spaces to be within to better share spaces like conference rooms and break rooms. We also proposed a few more efficiencies, such as combining the various wash bays proposed for each facility into one central wash bay, which is marked seven on the site plan. And we developed a phased approach to the Fuel Islands. In total, this plan reduces the overall site work on the site by about seven acres. While we were developing this plan, we also began to target lead gold, as we had heard that the future city projects would require a lead gold certification. We believe that this project has the opportunity to achieve lead gold, even though we are not required to do so, and this project can serve as a good example of sustainable practices. I'll expand on what those practices are in a couple of slides. We've also been communicating with the farmland team to ensure that our site strategy worked with the capping remediation plan set up by KDHE. During the design of this plan, we also had the adjacent neighborhoods in our mind. We wanted to further address their concerns and ensure we were proposing a project that they could stand behind. Following the development of this plan, we were able to do another round of community engagement where we updated them on this site plan. We felt that all of their concerns were still being addressed, and many were approved upon. For instance, the noisiest trucks that would be on the site were pushed farther to the east where the central maintenance garage is, and we were better shielding the parking areas with buildings and berms. We received positive feedback, which kind of invigorated us to continue designing. Go through a few 3D images. This is the before, looking at 19th and O'Connell, kind of looking northeast. This is the main entry of the site. This is the after. So you can see just in the middle of the site where the existing tanks were, that's the MSO building. And far on the right side of the page, down the hill about 40 feet in vertical elevation is the CMG building, so it's barely noticeable from the street. You can also see the large earth berms worth all the planting that's on this central left portion of the site and the acoustic wall to the entry of the site. This is the before, looking west on the southeastern portion of the site. There's the two formerly existing tanks that were recently demolished. This is the after. The MSO facility is kind of where one of those tanks are, and that's the flattest area on the site to develop. And then down the hill on the eastern portion of the site is the CMG solid waste building, which is still in early conceptual design. I'm going to talk a little bit about sustainability. Throughout the design of the project, sustainability has been an important focus for the entire team, and the city's capital projects policy has been a helpful guiding tool to the types of sustainable systems we are incorporating in the design. At a minimum, we want to be in line with that policy, both in the requirements that the city had when we began the project and in the future requirements that the policies are shifting towards. But we believe this project can go even beyond that. This led us to begin targeting lead gold as the goal for the project, even though it was not required when we began. We believe that this is an attainable goal and that this project can serve as an example of sustainable practices. There are several sustainable practices in the design that are contributing to our lead gold goal. Some of the major features are an efficient, all-electric mechanical system in every facility onsite, onsite renewable energy in the form of PV arrays on top of the facilities and parking canopies, preemptive infrastructure for changes in vehicle fueling types, site capping and vapor mitigation systems, low-water use native landscaping, overall reduced water consumption, enhanced metering and commissioning using local sustainable, long-lasting materials, and systems to reduce maintenance requirements, among various others. Those are just the major systems that are in the project. There are also other features that we have incorporated that are aimed at creating a sustainable workforce, in that we are designing spaces for the health, well-being, and retention of staff. For instance, we are maximizing healthy, natural daylighting to as much of the spaces as possible, and that includes the shop spaces and the office spaces, and anywhere that a person would be at any time is going to have healthy daylighting. We're also focusing heavily on indoor air quality in the shop spaces and multiple other strategies. All through the design of the facilities, we've checked in with the staff and listened to their needs, wants, and concerns, and their input has led to a better project. We want the facilities we are designing to be great places to work to address the concerns that we have mentioned before. Beyond that, we are also designing a facility that's sustainable for the surrounding community by incorporating lighting that minimizes light pollution, earth berms, and acoustic walls to reduce the acoustic impact of the neighborhood, and we are protecting as much of the existing habitat as possible. We're essentially building on places that there were buildings before and trying not to touch any of the trees that are on the site. Overall, the cost of the various sustainable features totaled about $5.6 million, but that number incorporates several strategies that lead the campus to being a long-term, flexible, and sustainable asset to the city's infrastructure. Now, I'm going to ship it back to Dan to talk about cost estimation and timeline.
Dan McGinn, Dake Wells. So we'd like to take a few minutes to summarize how the campus scope and cost impacts have developed over the last four years. In September of 2020, we gave a project update to city commission. At that time, for the MSO building, central maintenance garage, and solid waste building, we gave a rough order of magnitude of $95 to $115 million for that scope, based on 2020 industry standard cost per square foot numbers. And at this point, we were initially projecting construction starting in Q1 of 2022, but there was a lot of discussion and uncertainty about funding and the remediation strategy, which wasn't approved until last year. So at this presentation, we also made a point of calling out that construction cost escalation was an unknown risk because we all know what was going on at this point in time in 2020. In Q2 of 2021, we gave an update estimating rough order of magnitude at about $111 million for the key phases of the campus, projecting a construction start of Q4 of 2023. At this point, we still didn't know the extent of construction cost escalation. There was still a lot of uncertainty. It wasn't just typical supply and demand issues or the issues of a recession. It was the amplified effect of an unknown future. A lot of projects paused or were canceled, and those that remained in the pipeline started to see the uncertainty expressed as labor shortages, rising material costs, supply bottlenecks, and delays. We gave another update in Q2 of 2022. By this point, we still didn't have a construction manager onboard, but we were starting to understand the escalation impacts more, and the estimate for the campus rose to $123 million. In 2022, we still didn't have the remediation strategy approved by KDHE, and the construction schedule continued to push. We were starting to definitely understand the impact of escalation by this point, though. The last time we updated you on campus cost estimation was Q2 of 2023, last year. This showed that construction cost escalation had continued to increase at an unprecedented rate. At this point, the remediation strategy of capping was approved by KDHE, which was a requirement of setting a real construction timeline. By this time, the cost estimate had risen to $135 million, and we reported that we would explore a variety of strategies to get the cost down. And that brings us to today. We've been working closely with the construction manager, McCown Gordon, for the past few months, drilling down on efficiencies related to design and phasing. McCown Gordon's current cost estimate for the campus is at $133 million and is based on a solid 40% design development set for Phase One and a concept design set for Phase Two. Turn it over to Scott here for a minute to talk about how they developed that estimate and to put the last three and a half years of escalation into context, talk a little bit about contingency and escalation safeguards moving forward.
Good evening. Scott Kimsey with McCown Gordon Construction. So we got our contract approved on December 12th of last year, and over the last three and a half months have been working very diligently with the entire team. The first two and a half months were really focused on Phase One and getting our arms around the scope of that portion of the project and understanding not only construction costs, but working with the city and the project team to understand total project costs, because there's a lot of things that reside outside of the construction cost alone to make sure that the numbers that you guys are seeing are realistic and complete project values so you can make informed decisions. Our Phase One estimate was based on, as Dan said, some 40% design development documents, so they're about halfway through the design process. Our team has taken very detailed review of those drawings, quantification. We've gone out and surveyed the site and used some topographical information to understand grading and all the KDHE requirements associated with that and arrived at a total project cost for Phase One at about $65 million, which you guys will see here in a minute. The last month or so, we stepped back and said, you know, as we're going to go present this information to the city commission, they should be able to have some reliable information for the total project and spent a lot of time working through more detailed information on Phase Two so that we could come to the table with finite cost information on that. It's not nearly as far along, but we've been able to use a lot of the information that we had from Phase One to inform those costs, as well as the collaboration that we've had with the whole project team. It's been great. One thing I did want to make note of is, you know, if you think back to 2020, I know, you know, being in the construction industry, it was a time of uncertainty. You know, we didn't know what was going to happen. A lot of our job sites were shut down for a short period of time, and there were a lot of projects that were canceled. I think a lot of people thought that costs were actually going to decrease, we were going to see some times like we saw in 2010 and 2011 because of lack of work in the market. And that absolutely has not happened. Since the summer of 2020 to today, we've experienced about 32% escalation in construction cost. And at that point in time, if there was much, if any escalation in there, I would be surprised. You know, on the high side, you might have calculated, you know, eight to 10% to get us to today, and you know, we're sitting at, you know, 22%, 24% higher than that. So escalation is real, and I think accentuates the need to accelerate some of the scope of the project.
Dan McGinn, Dake Wells. So that last slide showed how we're currently tracking the campus cost at $133 million based on McCown Gordon's informed cost estimate. These next two slides kind of put that into visual context. Going back in time a bit, this slide takes us back to where we were at the end of 2023. So as I mentioned earlier, by this point, we were very concerned about cost escalation actually even taking us higher than 135. It was a real point of concern for us as a design team. The bottom line is that the costs were being driven by a few main factors. First and foremost, as Scott mentioned, unprecedented escalation related to post-COVID construction realities and uncertainties. Secondly, site development costs related to paving quantities and required earthwork. Thirdly, a long campus construction time pushing all the way into 2030. And finally, some additional sustainability features that Alex mentioned. So as we were kind of reeling from these escalation realities during the middle of last year, we realized that the best way to head off cost escalation was to look at three things. Going from three phases down to two, which would trim off two years of construction minimum, exploring efficiencies by combining solid waste and central maintenance garage into a single facility, and then reworking the site layout to reduce site work and paving. into a single facility, and then reworking the site layout to reduce site work and paving. This is where we are today. This is the layout and phasing of the $133 million number, Phase 1. As Alex mentioned before, that's the MSO facility in kind of the light blue color. Phase 2 is the combined solid waste and central maintenance garage in the tan color. So we proposed this idea to MSO leadership and to McCown Gordon in the same very, very long meeting, big, long meeting. This is exactly the kind of design adjustment that happens in the design development phase, and we think it closely aligns with the strategic plan in a number of ways. First, community engagement. We have built trust with the neighborhood through numerous meetings, and they have had a direct voice in the layout of the campus. Like Alex mentioned, they made the design better. Second, efficient and effective processes. A two-facility approach at the farmland site creates really efficient connectivity between the three buildings, the two buildings, MSO, solid waste, and central maintenance garage, the three actual users. Third, intentional and consistent delivery of city services. Key city services would finally be out of the floodway in spaces large enough to actually perform their work. Fourth, sound fiscal stewardship. Using a two-phase approach trims two years out of the schedule and reduces exposure to future escalation risks. And fifth, engaged and empowered teams. Designer of the campus comes from both the vision of MSO leadership, but also, as Andrew Cooper mentioned earlier, familiarly talking to and experiencing and witnessing boots-on-the-ground workers that actually do the work. I'd like to turn it back over to Scott to talk a little bit about their pricing and contingency and a possible way to maybe save some more money.
Scott Kimzie with McCown Gordon again. I think I've already kind of explained our process and approach to contingencies. I guess I'll expand on that a little bit. In our cost estimates, we do have some design contingency allocated for both Phase 1 and Phase 2 that allows the design team to kind of complete their process and hopefully eliminate some of the unknowns. We've accounted for escalation based on the current schedule and our projected buyout timelines, anticipating that we'll start going to contract with trade contractors for Phase 1 in the second half of this year, and with the buyout process ending in early 2025. And then we projected Phase 2 to go follow kind of a similar timeline, but starting in mid to late '26. We also, on our master budget side, and this is something that we recommend as we're working with, a lot of our clients have identified some owner contingency to be able to utilize to add scope at some point in the process once some unknowns are maybe behind us, allows us to deal with unknowns if they do arise, just really trying to make sure that, you know, at the end of the day, we come in under budget. As we were talking over the last couple of weeks about escalation, one of the things that came to mind was thinking about a process of maybe even accelerating the project a little bit more to where Dake Wells is wrapping up design on Phase 1 towards the end of this year and into early '25, and we would actually begin design into, in late '24 and early '25, and start buying this project out a year, about nine months ahead of the time that is currently projected in our $133 million estimate due to some efficiencies, not only with escalation and the time value of money, but just overlapping the construction operations and the team that's on site and that sort of thing. We're able to reduce that overall project cost by about $3 million.
Arlen Kleinschery with McCown Gordon Construction. A little about the timeline. You know, one of the advantages of bringing a construction manager onboard with the architect is not only pre-construction budgeting, as Scott mentioned, but also it allows us to fast-track the project. So what we would propose is come to the City Commission with three separate GMPs. So once Dake Wells is complete with the site, this first GMP, which stands for Guaranteed Maximum Price, it would include site work, site utilities, long-lead items, and that would be sometime in the fall of 2024, which would virtually allow us to start construction in that period. And then GMP 2 is the structure, in this case, structural steel, and that would get approval the end of this year. And then lastly would be GMP 3, which would be the remaining scopes of work. And what that allows, and that would be the spring of 2025, that allows us to cut off about four months of construction when we're able to fast-track that. And then we would use that, as Scott mentioned, that same mythology with Phase 2, you know, with solid waste, the maintenance garage, to get those early as well, and that's about nine months. So really, the whole campus could be complete, you know, somewhere in that mid-2027. So, and I'm going to turn it back over to...
Okay, so the next few slides show the proposed updates to the 2025-2029 CIP for the MSO Campus Project. During the discussion after the presentation, we would like the Commission to provide feedback on these CIP recommendations. So Phase 1 was previously authorized for a total amount of $53.7 million, funded by a combination of revenue debt and general obligation debt. In the 2025-2029 CIP, we're recommending a transfer into the project of $2.2 million from the farmland remediation project for impermeable capping of the site, which is a KDHE-approved remediation strategy, as Trevor Flynn and Jeff Scott discussed in their March 5th presentation to the Commission. That was approved by KDHE late in 2023. We're also recommending $7.9 million of new general obligation debt funding, which I've highlighted here in red. So that's the total project cost there for Phase 1. So the updates to the CIP are there in red. Phase 2 funding, Phase 2 was previously authorized for a total amount of $40.5 million of general obligation debt for the solid waste building. Melissa had previously referenced that. In the 25-29 CIP, we're recommending an additional $29 million of new general obligation debt funding, which will fully fund the Phase 2 combined Central Maintenance Garage and Solid Waste Building. The 24-28 CIP requested $39.6 million for the Central Maintenance Garage that was unfunded, but combining the Central Maintenance Garage and Solid Waste divisions into one building reduces the total request for Phase 2 by almost $11 million, and reduces the total cost of the MSO Campus Project by $2 million from the 24-28 CIP request. If we can accelerate the Phase 2 schedule to complete construction by mid-2027 or the end of 2027, that reduces that Phase 2 cost by an additional $3 million by reducing escalation for a total Phase 2 cost savings of nearly $14 million. So tonight, the Commission action requested is to authorize the city manager to execute Supplement 4 to the Engineering Services Agreement with Dake Wells Architecture in the amount of $2,989,166 for design and construction phase services for the MSO Campus Phase 1 project. The scope of this supplement is listed here, which includes 100% construction documents, bid phase services, all the lead gold services that we've talked about, construction administration throughout construction of Phase 1, and then commissioning of the building. But we also do want to discuss some direction and some feedback from the Commission, as I mentioned earlier, on the CIP recommendations listed here and that I had just covered. So while the Phase 1 cost has increased, that has been offset by reducing the Phase 2 costs by combining the Central Maintenance Garage and solid waste divisions into one building, and accelerating the Phase 2 schedule further reduces that cost by $3 million. So a couple of the items here that I've referenced, just transferring the $2.2 million from farmland remediation project for capping. That $2.2 million was factored into going towards the campus project in the farmland remediation cost breakdown. So there are numerous items that are going to be part of that remediation project. $2.2 million was available to apply towards whether it's capping, stormwater improvements, just related to the MSO campus. Increasing Phase 1 funding by $7.9 million, I referenced, and then fully funding the Central Maintenance Garage portion of Phase 2. And then just any thoughts or discussion on accelerating the Phase 2 design and construction to reduce the cost by an additional $3 million. We really appreciate the support the Commission has given this project over the past five years, and we're excited that construction will be beginning later this year. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Annie. All right. Any questions from the Commission?
I have a question.
Shebe, Commissioner Sellers beat you.
Go ahead.
Vice Mayor Dever? Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to get caught up on some of this because I wasn't around for 99% of it, so I just want to make sure I understand the context with where we're at today. Some of the information you provided was relative to the 2019 review and assessment of our existing facilities, and one of the bullet points talked about, we chose, we settled on farmland, and one of the questions I had previously was, what kind of considerations were given to alternate locations? Either existing locations that could be, you know, redone to meet our needs, or existing city land, or land we could trade with a third party for city land? What kind of other locations were considered that may have been more cost-effective or maybe just directly available if there's such a dire need? If we're in a floodplain, you know, we're hitting, you've got underground storage tanks, if these really are truly, you know, things that we need to do immediately, I feel like that should have been an immediate thought, and I just was curious where we were on that. So if you could just get me caught up on that one, I'd like that, please.
Okay, yes, after the 2017 presentation, I believe Brandon may have made that, but there was a site selection team that was put together of city staff from, I guess at that time it was Public Works and Utilities. There was City Manager's Office. Planning was on that team, and we looked at, I believe there were 12 different sites, some privately owned, probably more so city-owned sites. The results of that analysis that came out of the 2017 review was that about 75 acres, a minimum of 75 acres was required for this consolidated campus. As we started to look at the sizes of city-owned sites and privately-owned sites, there were not very many that met that requirement. The highest scoring site was the farmland remediation site. Second-highest was the Venture Park site directly to the south, which also met those size requirements. I don't recall exactly all the other sites and details about that, but that was kind of the result of that space needs analysis that was performed in 2017 and 2018.
So the focus was solely on a single campus and not potentially multiple locations that are maybe existing useful sites could be available, but we chose to consolidate everything? That was the end result of all the... Okay.
That was the recommendation.
Okay. And then the other question that I think might, just to tie into that, the existing space is six, I think we went from, you know, 7,000 to 77,000 roughly square feet of vehicle maintenance space. Are there calculations in what that increase in space is going to do on our budget and the O&amp;M related to this 10, seven times greater space? And have we, you know, considered that in our budget as it relates to the need for this tremendous increase relative to what we have today?
Yeah, so I might defer to, I know Andrew is online and some others, but there was, Dake Wells performed an efficiency analysis or an efficiency summary looking at operations costs and potential actual annual cost savings by consolidating the cost. Do you guys recall exactly the numbers from there? Sorry.
Well, that ties into, if you want to, it's kind of the efficiency, I understand, if you want to relocate in one place. I've heard lots of, you know, discussions about how that can increase efficiency for many, and I just wondered if there's actually any defined calculated efficiencies we're going to see from this transformation, and also if they've been shown, or have we thought about the long-term cost, too? That's what I'm kind of trying to catch up on.
So yeah, so there is an efficiency summary. I will go back and find that. I believe we did present that several years ago, and so I can get a copy.
Yeah, that's one, just a couple of things that I saw when I read through it earlier and then tonight. So, and then the LEED certification you mentioned is a $6 million cost. Is that solely for consulting and/or fees related to achieving that goal? Or are these mostly tied into using traditionally higher-quality building, you know, maintenance, excuse me, mechanical systems, building standards? Or are these direct, that $6 million directly related to achieving LEED status?
It's a combination of all of those. I would say a majority of the cost is related to the actual systems. We do have information about, say, an electric, an all-electric system versus gas system. And, you know, in our sustainable capital projects policy, a gas system is not preferred, and so we kind of just, you know, went towards the electric and some of those other things we've heard on previous projects. And so, yeah, I don't know. Melinda, yeah, she's the expert on it.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Melinda Harger, Assistant Director of MSO. We did receive a breakdown from the team to develop that $5.6 million. About $5 million of that is actual, you know, capital infrastructure going in, so it does cost more for the all-electric building and facility, larger generator, things like that. We were looking at a cost, you know, half a million dollars, I'm going off the top of my head, which I shouldn't do, but for the renewable energy and a lot of that, I'm not sure that we've gotten to the point where we're going to do all of the O&amp;M costs relative in the modeling. That comes during the design phase, where we typically will look at what those operational costs are, and we like to do like a return on investment for investing in renewable energy, you know, what is that going to save us on the energy side? So I don't know if you have even that breakdown handy? Great.
So I have some general rough numbers for some of the sustainable features on there. One of the big ones is solar, so we have a PV array. That's about half a million dollars of PV, a little bit more than that. The acoustic berms, which is more a sustainable thing about sustainable communities, that's about $800,000 on that. The capping strategy using concrete rather than asphalt, because we want the concrete to last a long time for the sustainable, that's about $2.5 million. The landscaping that we have, which is, we're only watered so it can start off and then no more watering after that, it's all native planting, that's about $200,000. And then increased insulation and solar glazing and things like that, that's another like $1 million. And so those coupled with mechanical systems, which we are actually working with an energy consultant right now that is giving us recommendations on things that we can do for the building in terms of energy performance, those are parts of it. And in general, the energy performance that we're getting out of it are about 14.4% better than a normal system is in energy, which is about $40,000 a year in electric costs. But she's actually recommended us some strategies that we can get it up to about $60,000, about 23.3% better than like a baseline system for a mechanical system by itself. So those are some rough numbers that I'm kind of throwing at you, but that's what kind of makes it.
I like it. Thank you. Sorry for the diversion. Those are questions I had. Thank you.
Commissioner Sellers?
Commissioner, I thought Commissioner Larson had a question.
Oh, sorry. Commissioner Larson?
Okay. I thought she raised her hand before me. Okay. Melinda, I think that was my question for you. Or it might be for Mr. Cooper. I know we did the efficiency assessment, so that leads to the structural piece. Melinda, could you talk, either Melinda or Melissa, can you talk to me about what the efficiency is going to be by having the campuses with the different phases, having all the campuses together? campuses together? What does that mean from like a workforce standpoint, usability? What does that, what does that, what does that benefit to?
And I may defer this, Commissioner, to Scott Fueens, who's here, who's our general manager over our field and field staff. And really, right now, it means that we're in a variety of places and sometimes dispatching to go to a site from different locations, maybe not as fully coordinated as we could be. So that's part of it. But then the other part of it is, you know, when we're trying to work on issues, I mean, I don't know how many times a week I'm driving all over the place to meet with staff or the number of times that, you know, people are, are moving from point A to point B. So it really, it does consolidate us into one spot where I can walk over and meet with someone instead of have to hop in my car or plan in a 25-minute walk. But there's more to that. And I think that, you know, Scott, if, if you did have something you would love to share about that, I think it would be great. The other thing is right now, solid waste is across the street from the, the garage, which doesn't sound like that big of a deal, but they'll be in the same building and they interact every day, all day long. And to be able to walk over and have that face-to-face conversation and solve things more readily, I think is going to be huge for us. Scott, do you want to come up? Do you have anything you want to add?
Good evening. Scott Fueens, MSO, General Manager of Field Operations and Inspections. Currently, we are spread for at least four different locations for inspections, water, wastewater, storm, streets, and traffic. And it, it's a lot of juggling, especially on some of the critical trainings. We just did competent person training. It's, it's very hard to get everybody together at the same time. Craig met with us recently and we made it as inefficient as possible for him to get around to us. So, yeah, it's just a lot of juggling, a lot of people that don't know each other day to day, a lot of equipment sharing that isn't real convenient because it's across town or needed here and it's not there. So it is, it is a juggling. We've, we've been very creative at, at having offices here or there and trying to get people together. We also do extensive cross-training, or we cross-strengthen crews every six months. We try to move people around. And there's a certain amount of angst when you take somebody that's worked somewhere at five years and now you're just moving them across town. It sounds simple to us, but it gets them out of their, a little too far out of their comfort zone sometimes, you know, where, where they're used to working at home. So those are some of the logistics. It's a lot more complicated. If you want to get into it with me, I can go hours. So, but certainly that's what we see. And I think there's a huge advantage to getting everybody under one roof and knowing each other and, and helping out. So I hope that helps.
And then beyond that, it's just meeting space, the lack of ability to, to meet. We have a conference room here in City Hall that we take up a lot of times, and we really don't have them anywhere else. You, you saw where our solid waste crews meet. It's probably one of our bigger open areas that, that we actually have as MSO to, to meet in. And that's not real big. And so that makes it hard for some kind of the all-hands conversations we need to have. We, we often are, you know, sharing different tools and equipment, but they're not located in the same building. And again, it's either a drive or walk. And the walk doesn't bother me, but when it's, you know, cold and rainy or icy, I, you know, prefer not to do that. And I think most of our crews are that way, too. So at the end of the day, there's lots of little parts and pieces, but everything from all the different service contracts we have to have from our facilities maintenance side just to keep all of these buildings moving, that in itself is a really big, I would say, leg on MSO for maintaining all of these very challenged buildings that we have. So you, you look into that, and we didn't talk about facilities tonight because they're in a different location and they're not set to, to co-locate with us. But they have to service those along with Scott's crews. So, and I, right now, my engineering staff sits in a water plant in different places and kind of like a basement. If you've not been over there, it's a great smell of, you know, fresh drinking water, but it's also very humid and it's hard on our computer equipment and things of that nature. It's just the variety of different types of challenges. I can't even begin to explain. And the safety ones are pretty apparent when you look at the pictures. So the efficiencies, I think we get away from some of the, some of the opportunities for work comp challenges. We get away from some of the, the liabilities that we have, and we can focus more on our work and less on those concerns on a day-to-day basis.
And then looking at slide 29, that, that, those, the campus needs, and then looking at the analysis, the existing condition analysis of what is existing and what is required, I guess my question is, we started this conversation in 2017 and we got the ball going in 2019. But when we had the conversation in 2017, were we at capacity then? Were we over capacity? Where, you know, in a growth ring, where did we out, where, where did we outsize ourselves? Because I, I want to imagine it was probably before 2017.
Yes.
Just the odds.
Yeah. Short answer, yes.
Yes. That confirms. I'm just, we, we've been outsized for quite a decade. Thank you. Decades. Okay. That, that's what I, I think the other questions will come in handy with in asking them when you want to get answers from us as far as the CIP, Andy. Because I did have some questions about the, just with the rates and how that's going to impact. And I think that's a discussion that the, you know, us commissioners can have a little bit deeper on, but I'll end there. I did have a, yeah, I'll end it there. Melinda, don't go far.
I'd like to talk about the budget just for 2024 and the CIP this year, just to make sure I understand the funding aspect of it and what's there, what was allocated and what's actually being spent. So for the 2024 CIP, we had allocated, I'd be 5.7 million, I believe, if I remember right. Yeah, 5.7 million for 2024. And that was to include all the construction documents. So is, is that correct?
And that was to start on site work.
Oh, it was to start?
Yes.
Okay. Because what I'm seeing is it's 2.9 million to get the construction documents, to get them out to bid. Is that what this is?
That's for construction documents and construction administration for Deke Wells.
And so that still leaves us with about four, that's 3 million. So that still leaves us with this money to start actually building. So the rest of that fund, those funds will be used for actual build, site building. Got it?
Yes, that, that first GMP that starts with site work and some of the early or long lead items like electrical equipment and things like that would be, we'd be coming to you in, in October probably of, of '24 to start with that.
Okay. That's what I wasn't for sure. But where, where was that X money? Where was it going? So, thank you.
Yeah, it was confusing. You're right.
Yeah.
For pointing that out.
I guess I did have questions about the kind of funding mechanism, like, I mean, I assume, under the accelerated plan, we, basically 2026 has the bulk of the, jumps up to $40 million with 25 million in solid waste, general obligation bonds. I mean, do we have capacity for that? I assume we've, we've gone through that and is that already built in?
It started to have some of, or has had some of those discussions, yes.
Is that built in with the current rate structure or built in with the accelerated rate structure?
That got to me.
So with this, we're not proposing any additional revenue bonds. And so it wouldn't, currently wouldn't impact utility rates. And the solid waste amount is not changing, so that wouldn't impact the solid waste rates. Storm, stormwater, same thing. I guess for now, we've, we've put it in general obligation bonds. And so it's, it's a little bit undefined, I think, at this point, other than being general obligation debt capacity. And if I may, that has always been kind of the question mark because of the rates we've been very carefully building towards this capacity across all those utilities. We haven't had an answer for the general obligation. And that's where we're working on our CIP, our long-range CRP and our debt structure. So this is coming, bringing the reality to it, but we're bringing the reality to it with a, a reduced price from what we thought we might be at. But GO is where we're going to have to make up the difference, and we've kind of always known that. Because the revenue side, who is benefiting? The funds that are benefiting from this facility? We've accounted for everything except the general fund. And so we knew that some of this was going to happen.
So in totality, half the funding, about half the funding is going to come from GO versus revenue bonds? Is that what I'm seeing on the, on the CIP? 23 million from GO and 21 million from future revenue bonds?
I'm going to pull, pull that up again. So.
Yeah, I was, I was pulling this off the CIP sheet from last budget.
The, the '24 through '28 CIP. Yeah, and I, I think with that one, we had the 39.6 million of, of GO that was going to be allocated to central maintenance garage. That has been reduced to 29 million. However, there's an additional 7.9 million that we're showing here on, on phase one.
Got it.
So there's some, some offset there, but it's still all with.
And referring to the, the amount of revenue bonds, so yeah, phase one, it's 23.6 million of the 64.8. The previous CIP column is all dollars expended through 2024. So that can be misleading, but that's all the previous money up through this year. And then we do not have in phase two that revenue component because it is solid waste. And then central maintenance garage, we're showing with the general obligation. So if you're looking at the total for the campus at 130 million, 133 million, 23.6 is revenue. And then you do have the component, about 7 million from, that's paid back by the storm rates. And then solid waste, 39.4. And that's all factored into the rate model already for solid waste and for, for stormwater.
So the 6.9 is the same as in the CIP, the 2024 CIP? Right, got it. Thank you.
So it seemed the, the only reason not to support accelerating it to get them in early and saving $3 million would be if we didn't have the bonding capacity to do it, right? I mean, am I missing something?
I think that's an accurate statement. Yeah.
And you, I mean, well, not, CIP is coming in a few weeks or months, but you think, you think we can get to that bonding capacity?
Yes, and I think the savings in relatively, that much savings in a relatively short time, we need to figure out how. One way or another, it's worth it, I guess is what I'm saying, in our cash management of the CIP. Is question one and two together?
Yeah. Yeah, and accelerating two. And I would, I mean, we're not in the comments section yet, but I remember last time, my biggest complaint was central maintenance garage was so far away. Getting, I mean, that was one of our biggest needs, and it was way off in the future. So I.
And to that point, can I ask?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So I had written down the 30 spaces that are including, the 30 conditioned spaces included in phase one. How many spaces are currently in the eight to 10-bay building we have now? In other words, are we increase, are those going to be used? Can we move those people, all that space? What would be, what, what's the intention currently? I guess, would it be enough room for them to move? Or is that not the intention?
The, the eight to 10 bays of where, of where?
Uh, within the existing site where the central maintenance, where you've got vehicles stacked in two bays outside the building and six, three-deep some places?
The, the 30 conditioned spaces are just for phase one. So.
That doesn't include maintenance? Those aren't the maintenance spaces?
Those are not maintenance.
Okay. What do the conditioned spaces mean then?
So some of the really expensive equipment, like the VAC trucks, the TV camera trucks.
Got it.
Those will need to be inside so we can get up to 30, 30 of those vehicles inside now. Central maintenance will, I think Andrew had shown that, that big building and, and that can fit. Do you guys know how many big vehicles versus small vehicles can fit in central maintenance?
More than 30. I think we have eight bays times two, so 16 large vehicles, and then I think space for 24 small vehicles that we've worked on at the same time.
Okay. Thanks. So that was confusing. So that's, so they're not going to move unless we speed it up to a point?
Yeah.
Okay. That's what I was wondering. Thank you.
And to jump on that, I believe, didn't, didn't this winter, we had problems with some of our larger vehicles during the inclement cold, severe cold in terms of?
Yeah, I, I think we do every winter.
That's, yeah, as Andy said, it's an every winter challenge, but I will tell you that we can put a puzzle together pretty well, but we're running out of places to stick things. And I know Scott's crew, that, that just kind of doesn't happen with field. And with our solid waste vehicles, I mean, we pack as many as we can and up on our, what we call our swan building. But yeah, I mean, it's not, it's not a, a smart way of doing business.
Yeah. And that flows into, you know, our concentration on asset management and making the best use of our assets. So.
Yeah. And that, I guess it did come up with combining people, sounds great, but will there be any, also any potential human efficiencies as well? Meaning, you know, are there going to be general efficiencies by having everyone together where fewer people may be needed to do, say, administrative work, but maybe more in the field where they're serving the customers directly or whatever? So I guess that's the one question I never really saw addressed, but I'm hoping that that efficiency will lead to human resource efficiency as well for you. Because, you know, that's, this cost is going, it's going to keep going up the bigger we get. So it's important to see.
Any additional questions?
So with all the efficiencies that you've come up with, is it still going to give us an opportunity to have growth out there? Or are we going to be crammed in there already from start?
So we have a 30-year, oh, okay, 30-year projected growth. I believe some of the, the, one of the slides that Dan showed early on was a growth in number of vehicles, growth in number of employees. And so it was a 30-year timeframe that we looked at.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
But that 30-year growth is based on using the same facilities and instruments and materials that we will be using now? The idea is that 20 years from now, we may change the game in how solid waste and stormwater is done. So that 30, that 30-year is based on current practices and standards, not necessarily. Sorry, I'm getting into discussion. Sorry. Keep going. I'm trying to, I'm trying to get us to discussion.
Yeah. Yeah, Commissioner Zander with R.T.A. Architects. So one of the things we did at the programming phase is we did work with community development to understand what the growth of the community as a whole, and that's what we applied to staffing and fleet. So it's not just how services are delivered, but it's how the city is going to grow. And then in that programming phase, you know, five years ago, we were looking at large vehicles that were 16-foot wide by 32 feet long. Now we're looking at vehicles that are 18 to 20 feet long by 45 feet long. So we made sure to forecast that total vehicle size for maintenance and storage to things that we see coming in on the marketplace. Even with the introduction of alternative fuel vehicles, they are not getting smaller, they're getting bigger. So we made sure to incorporate that into the programming phase so that what you're seeing in terms of facility sizes are based on those industry projections and some of those best practices. And we work closely with central maintenance and, and other industry manufacturers to understand where some of those trends are going so that we're as close to a crystal ball as possible. It's never very clear, but we can kind of filter some of that out to make sure that we're forecasting the right way.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
There's a really good setup for Marty, where we're going, we don't need roads.
That's borderlining on a dad joke.
It does beg the question, that the new fire truck we have, that can it even get inside the maintenance garage without sticking out the two ends? I wouldn't imagine.
I know.
No, I think that was a problem.
I mean, the new ones, the old ones barely fit.
I want you up here.
But the new one, I hope it doesn't need maintenance anytime soon.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Yeah, you're referring to the tiller. When that unit is in our facility, there's about four feet that we have to walk around it.
Wow. Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Thank you.
All right. Agenda items, so we're going to public comments. Any public comment here in the room? Not seeing any. Sherry, is there any public comment? I'm sorry, sir, did you have public comment?
Hi, my name is Timothy Hayes. I don't know if I really qualify for public comment. I'm employed with the City of Lawrence for the last 23-plus years, meaning I'm in my 24th year, as a master mechanic one. I work as central maintenance garage, and I really truly hope you do approve the continuation and give Craig the okay, because I may be coming closer into my career, but the facility we are stuck in right now leads to inefficiencies, tripping over equipment and whatnot. Plus, there is a need to increase the staffing, but the size of the facility doesn't facilitate that. So thank you very much, and thank you.
Thank you, Timothy. Any additional public comment here in the room? Okay. Sherry?
There's no comment on it.
All right, I'll bring it back to us. I think we're tasked with two items.
Mayor, I apologize. I meant to ask one more question, I just realized I'd forgotten it. Wanted to talk about the farmland remediation, the capping monies a little bit. And when you say you're transferring that, but it's still going to be used as a remediation process, is that right?
That's correct. It would just go from the, 2.2 million dollars would go from the farmland project number to the MSO campus number, project number, but it would, it's still used for the capping. It's for the concrete parking lot that goes over the land use restricted area on the farmland site.
So as we continue to gauge the costs that the remediation is costing us at the city, we will still, that 2.2 million, will that still be counted as part of the remediation costs overall? So if we ask, how much did the remediation cost? Is that 2.2 billion still going to be part of those costs?
Yes, yeah, because it will be one of the remediation strategies that are approved by KDHE, and we'll know that it's going to that and to collecting, you know, part of this, kind of getting into the weeds here, is separating the clean stormwater from the parking lot in the buildings, from the dirty stormwater that's going to go to the containment ponds. Jeff had talked about that a little bit. And so whether it's just the concrete parking lot or the stormwater collection, it will all be a remediation strategy from the farmland remediation project.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, Mayor.
No problem. And what I was just going to say is, looks like staff's tasked us with two items here. First is deliberation on action regarding the amount of monies, 2.9 million, and then the second one, direction. So just to go ahead and tackle the first one, discussion. Any discussion on it? Go ahead.
Happy to go. Just to really appreciate all the answers, and I appreciate the update a lot, because it's a lot of information, lots of people have questions, including people who might write, just people walk on the street, how we're going to arrive at this number, but I really feel comfortable that you guys have really studied and assessed this pretty thoroughly. It's hard to understand about moving the 7.9 million dollars increase, but yet the overall project is going to cost less should we do this. So I think, you know, in people's minds, it's hard to wrap around, but I think I understand it now, thanks to other people. I really believe that there's this 2.2 million dollar from farmland. I tried to reach out to MSO and go look over some of the process and the progress of the site and some of the future engineering design concepts, and I feel like this is an appropriate use of those funds, based on my original reading of the contract over 10 years ago, and also the current status of our remediation efforts and the quality and the efficiency of where we're at at this point in time, removal of storage tanks, you know, I think we're in a place where we could actually reduce the amount of water we generate by capping the site with that money, and then also reduce the outflow, which reduces our management and effluent and pollution potentially. So that's, I'm a big fan of that idea. I'm not a fan of quote-unquote "taking it from the fund," but I think we've made it clear that that's not the case. So I want to make sure everyone understands that this is truly remediation technique that will, that will actually effectively reduce the amount of outflow from the site, hopefully. And so I guess I understand the increase now better, and I feel comfortable with, you know, all four points.
Yeah, I do appreciate the continued search for efficiencies, and I do like the way that we've kind of upped the schedule, because I remember before, it just seemed all drawn out a long time, and the cost every year keeps going up, keeps going up. So I do appreciate that, continuing to look at, to look at that. And also with the remediation money, I think it's important to make sure that is allocated as a remediation project, and that is charged against that, because it is remediation essentially. So, you know, I understand the increase needed in order to start, you know, have the efficiencies on the backend, and I support that, so thank you.
So that was the action and all, and the direction as well, just to be clear?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Gotcha. Well, since we're all going, I'll go as well. Yes, I concur with both the points made by Commissioner Larson and also Vice Mayor Devo on that. The money is being asked for right now as a supplement. I can see what good they will do in the long run in terms of minimizing the, our allocation overall for the entire project. And I agree with Commissioner Finkel, that was one point that I'd always thought about is that that building that was way over there, so condensing the footprint a little bit, it makes, makes a little bit more sense as well. And also the 2.2, to go ahead and go with a more efficient and more substantial capping, so that we were not paying for it later with, you know, some sort of decay or degradation if we were to go with something lower. So I would agree, I concur with the action requested and on the direction requested as well, all four points.
I guess I can jump in a couple things. First, I was looking here while we're talking, Vice Mayor Devo, go look at the, when you go back and look at the April 20th, 2021, is the presentation on the efficiencies, also has the site study in there.
Okay.
As we've used the site study, but, you know, just kind of mentioned, I think the bottom line was about $2 million in annual savings in various capacities. And then it had an interesting study that if we had a flooding event that took out all our vehicles, it was 21.6 million we would lose on the vehicles. So let's hope we get built before the next flooding event. But it had about, it had several ways of efficiencies in there, and I, it was convincing to me back then, it's still convincing me today. I do like the accelerated timeline, I do like the new design. I'd also say the, you know, we, sometimes people question construction manager at risk, but appreciate Miguel Gordon and Scott and your team for what you're doing and the value engineering we're getting out of that, not only in the design phase, but, you know, helping understand the pacing and flow to find those savings. So appreciate that, and I think we're getting good benefit out of that contract already. And, you know, there's, again, I, you know, I've supported the project. I think it is important, you know, for the public to understand, we've been planning for this for a while, it's been in our CIP for a while, and it's a big dollar amount, but we've been, been working towards this, you know, since 2017 and beyond, getting ready for this. So it's already factored in in most of our ways. We'll see that in the CIP and our rate structures, and, you know, this is not like all of a sudden, we're spending 130 more million dollars that we haven't been planning for, so. And so I appreciate the presentation going through all that. So I certainly support the contract that's before us to get that moving along. I support the transfer of the farmland remediation, as well as the Phase One and Phase Two and accelerating that, assuming we can make it work in our, our funding models, our GO models. Certainly support accelerating that and saving the money. I guess, as Craig said, we need to find a way to do it. For $3 million, it's worth, it's worth the effort. And again, obviously, I hope Miguel Gordon and others continue to find ways to save some more money. We'll take every savings we can get along the way.
And Mayor, before, I forgot one question. What happens if we're outside the bid range to this process? I guess I'm curious, you know, we're so far behind the eight balls, as Mr. Sellers mentioned, we're, what, you know, what would be the next step for us? That would be the only question.
If we're outside the bid.
Bid range estimate.
Bid range. Scott, do you want to talk about how the construction manager gets bids? And, okay. Excuse me, thank you.
So like I said, we engaged December 12th or 13th, I guess, in this process, and we've got a team of people, myself, Ireland back here, and more back at our office, that have been really engaged in the process. And we stay engaged all the way through the final guaranteed maximum price development. We're estimating this thing probably four, five, six times, so that when we go bid something out, like, we have good budget numbers that we're working to. If there's a swing in escalation or whatever, we're identifying that and identifying ways to, to make it all continue to fit within the, in the box through value engineering or finding more efficiencies to offset, you know, surprises that happen through the design phase.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Just real quick, thank you for the presentation. Everything that you presented on Andy and the ask from the commission, I support. I think this is probably one of the biggest projects coming on as a commissioner that I've been a part of, and I feel like I've gotten the depth of it while being on the commission, and having that opportunity to tour all the facilities and to be able to have that scope and understanding, so that I can tangibly see it and recall that in my mind as we go through this process has been incredible. So I do feel like what has been presented to us is where we're at in this time of need, and we do need to figure it out, because we don't know, you know, it's not even behind the eight ball. We're, you know, we're playing Russian roulette right now, and we've been playing it for a very long time. And that scares me a bit, and the fact that we've put so much on the backs of our community with this project, and if we have the opportunity, opportunity to accelerate it and get some cost efficiencies done with it, I mean, I almost want to say it's a drinking game, saying efficiencies, we said it so much this evening. But we're getting there, and I hope our community understands it. This is just, this is not just about workplace efficiencies and capacity efficiencies. This is related to just a growth of a community, and for our ability to sell ourselves to companies as that we have the infrastructure in place to do business. So this is a, for me, this is a cost benefit for our residents, for our business partners, for our region, so I like it, I enjoy it. Thank you for the presentation, look forward to this project, breaking ground.
I would like to add a quick ad as well, and I appreciate the components of asset management that I mentioned earlier, and also the lead services, which I know will pay off down the road, so. All right.
Thank you.
I would.
So we need a motion?
A motion on the action item?
I'll make a motion. Authorize the city manager to execute supplement number four to the engineering services agreement with Dake Wells Architecture in the amount of $2,989,166 for design and construction phase services for the MSO Campus Phase One Project, MS100023A. Second?
Have a first and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pass is five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your presentation, all your work on this. I'll give them a little bit to. Ow. Brought the whole crew. Roll deep.
It's a lot of money.
All right, I'll go ahead and bring us to item G, commission items. Any commission items?
Just real quick, there was a question about Blume Balancing Act, might come online? Did you have?
Yes, I, I think it's in May. We're, we're getting ready to launch kind of a community engagement invitation, so it won't just be turning it on. We will turn it on, and we want lots of participation, and there will be some events scheduled so that we introduce more people to the tool and get more input. So it'd be even bigger than last year by a stretch.
And David, I would note, I think, a couple questions. So we actually had a presentation last week about 11:30 at night on the, on the home, on the Homestead Act and the property tax. And so you can check out that presentation at the end of, last, was it last week?
No.
We can go Tuesday.
I said last, I meant last week.
I know.
Two Tuesdays.
The prior meeting on Tuesday.
The last meeting.
Thank you, that's what I meant to say. But it was like at 11:30 at night, so very end of the meeting.
It's late.
So you can check that out, and some of the options we're going to look at.
Yeah.
And then.
Water bills.
I think the brick and the sidewalk is, we had an open house to start the discussion about how we handle brick streets, and if we handle them differently and how we handle them. So that's the very start of that process, and it's an open house to have that discussion. That's all I have.
Couple of things.
One, I wanted to follow up on, I know we've had the camping hotline, and in the presentation two weeks ago-ish with Misty, when I asked the question of how do we identify camping and how that's defined, and I do have some concerns about the reporting and the number of campsites, and if one person constitutes a campsite. I just want a little bit of clarity on how that's been looking, how that hotline has been deployed since, and if calls are decreasing, increasing, and, I mean, I hate to say it, but there might be some efficiencies that need to be with the hotline and how we're doing that, because I'm worried that this becomes more of a scare tactic and fear mongering than it actually becomes something that is helpful and beneficial for our staff and our community. The other piece is, I know there was, I want to say, I know it was last year, there was a conversation in Ahab about not, payment plans, payment arrangements for utilities. Did we ever get to that? I know there was a letter, and it made its way, and I don't think we took action on it, but have, I want to say, if we haven't established payment arrangements, I'd like to bring that back to us, Craig.
Yeah, it's my understanding that we do not offer that as a program, but it is something that we've talked about and we were looking at.
Okay, so I really would like for us to look at that. I think there's a bigger discussion to be had that we didn't get to because of our late meeting that talked about long-term rental inspections, short-term rental, and the impact of long-term rentals and housing assistance, but also utility assistance, and how are we measuring that with that responsibility being on the tenant, but then also us when it could. responsibility being on the tenant, but then also us, when it could be the landlord is neglectful in their, their upkeep. So I'd like for us to see, to see something as it relates to establishing payment arrangements. I think we're one of the larger municipalities in this, in this region that doesn't offer that for our utilities. And so as we look to create affordability and access and equitability in that, we need to make sure we're pursuing that. And then I know there was the infamous proviso of SB 542. I know we don't, we've oftentimes provided testimony, we haven't. This right now, it doesn't look like, like I said, it's part of the budget, so more than likely, it'll get pushed out to go to the governor, and then they'll fight it out when they come back for veto session for Omnibus. But I do have some concerns with some of the language in the bill, and I know we probably don't have consensus, and we definitely don't have tonight to discuss that. But I would like to offer up us writing some sort of veto letter to the governor in regards to the language in that bill as relates to, those who receive the funding would be required to enforce any type of no camping ordinance. And I think, I know that there's been some titchiness about that, and I know there was a statement that was out by the league, but I do have some concerns as it relates to home rule, that our legislature dangling money in front of us and saying, you can't do this unless you do that, really impacts on our home rule. So something for us to consider, to think about, or if any other commissioners are interested in discussing it, they can funnel that through you, and we can figure that out. And then my last one, which is a happy one. I had the opportunity, I do some work in Oklahoma, and the clinic that I have there, we do crisis management for harm reduction for opioid addiction, and had an opportunity to meet with one of the chiefs of the Oklahoma City Fire and Medical Department. And so we are one of the, we're part of, our clinic is part of the crisis management team. So when an individual is in crisis, as it relates to opioid addiction, we are a place that they go to establish care and support. So had a great time talking, same as Lance, just had a great time talking to them about their mobile response team and their crisis team, and so definitely wanted to connect him with Chief Lawell and Chief Lockhart, and just how, you know, kind of using that synergy to look at best practices and opportunities to elevate the work that we're doing here. And so just wanted to shout out Lance from OKC Fire and Medical, and thanking him for entertaining me for 20 minutes as we were doing an open house down in Oklahoma City. So that is all.
So on the camping hotline, are you wanting something back?
Yeah, just a report on usage.
Or, I'm just trying to be clear of what we...
If we can get a call-ups, I need to do on these. Yeah, if we can get a report, city managers' report on it, just on usage, and just how those calls are being, you know, I don't know, substantiated, you know, if they're substantiated or unsubstantiated, similar to what we did for the inspections. Just want to know the userability of it.
I'd be behind that.
Okay. And then the payment plans for utilities, where...
Would the budget be okay for that discussion? I know that it comes up every year, utility assistance comes up, but the payment plan stuff, or?
Yeah, if we can get it past city managers and actually have a good conversation about it. Yep, we can talk about it in budget. So prepare yourselves, we're going to talk about it, folks. Not just talk about it, do something about it. So yes, we can wait till the budget. Nope, we can wait for the budget.
And then the testimony on the SB 542, where...
That was just more for, I don't think we're going to get consensus on it. I wouldn't want to put anybody in that predicament right now, so...
Okay, I just wonder...
Just more for FYI, if anyone else is interested in having, having staff in that, go in that direction.
On that, I mean, we, we can restate where we are on it. There's things we like and things that we don't like. We like the funding, we don't like the strings that are being put on it that are, have no clarity to them. I think that's consistency with our existing policy. So we could certainly state that in a letter to the governor and to any of the congressional deleg, or legislative delegation.
At this point, legislation would, I think it would probably go to the governor. I think it would be helpful.
Strings attached with our money seems odd, but I guess that's what happens.
That's why they do it.
Nebulous definition of home rule on their part.
Bishop Sellers, can, can, is that, is that subject to a line item veto? Could she line item that? So that's what you're, that would be, I don't know, I'm just asking the question.
I mean, I would like a line, a line item veto of that, but one, because it's only $5 million to Kdad, and it's $15 million to Setra County. So if Setra County wanted $15 million, then ask for your 15 minutes, 15 million, don't drag us into it. So...
Oh, I see.
Because it went from 40 to 20, and 15 of that 20 is going to Setra County.
I didn't realize that.
And the $5 million that we get, that the rest of the state gets to fight over, we have, we're mandated on something that's currently going to be argued in the Supreme Court, so.
Got it.
Feel like we're, we're getting the cart in front of the horse. Or the carts fly five miles down the road, and we're sitting here trying to figure out how the cart got down there. So I think reiterating our stance, I'm, I'm amenable to that.
Yeah.
And just letting the governor know that.
Okay.
Yes.
I am as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Sheri.
All right. No other commission items. City managers' report.
The only thing is the future agenda items, and I think we are prompting a discussion of what do we want to do on the 16th.
Right. Which, yes.
We still need to have a meeting, we couldn't just cancel it.
What's going on the 16th?
DC.
Go ahead, Sheri.
Yeah, so we initially had had three men, three members indicate they wanted to go on that trip, and I, I know that now has dwindled, so, but we moved several items, so.
Yeah, we, we thought...
We moved everything.
That was going to be necessary, so we started moving everything. And then, but we still, there's a couple items that still need to be taken up, and those could be taken up on the 23rd or the 31st, because we have five Tuesdays.
Not the 31st.
Or it looks like maybe we only have one member missing on the 16th. We could still have it and just keep it light.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah?
Yeah, and even if we just have two going, if there's ordinances, we always risk that chance, because we have to have, I mean, certain things we have to, we want to make sure we have.
A quorum.
So we only have one person going to DC now.
Yeah, only one person going now, so we just have a normal agenda.
Okay.
Yeah.
But we'll have a meeting on the 23rd?
Well, we wouldn't.
Okay, we wouldn't.
Keep, keep 16th, just do the things that we've...
Yeah, you got...
We can't move, or that we need to have addressed within May, or within April, I mean. We couldn't move to the 7th, or move up to the, to the 9th.
Yeah.
So...
Go ahead with the 16th, with just those items that need to be dealt, dealt with.
Yeah, no 23rd.
Okay.
So, Brandon, I just, because tentatively, there are a couple of items for the 23rd, if they rescheduled it, that we would like to go before May. Would they be able to go on the 16th?
I think the Douglas County Draft Climate Action Plan would be ready for the 16th. The 16th is going to be challenging for the homeless response team presentation, just lining up with the operation that Misty's leading, so.
So I think they were wanting to do it on the 23rd.
Yeah, I mean, we...
Ideally, for those, for that item, it would be on the 23rd, or we could wait till May to do that.
Wait till May.
Wait till May.
Okay.
The climate action report would be on the 16th?
Mm-hmm.
From the county?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So tentatively, only one thing on the agenda?
We would, we would anticipate quite a bit of discussion around that item, too.
But that doesn't have to go on the 16th. That could go in May, too.
Correct.
Mm.
There's, there's only a couple items, and we don't think that they're going to need a lot of discussion, they're more administrative.
I'm looking at May right now, and May's pretty heavy. And I'm not going to be here on the 21st, because that's graduation for me all over the place. So I'm looking at the 7th and 14th, and you guys are saying, just put it in May. And I'm like, where in May are we going to put it?
Yeah, looking at the schedule, you mean, already?
Mm-hmm. I mean, you guys can go ahead and do it on the 21st. But I always feel like when I'm gone, that's when all the things that I want to be here for, so I feel slighted a little bit. So, I mean, go ahead.
That's why we have these conversations.
I know.
Mommy, I think we, if we only have one person going, I think we leave the 16th, and if we put some items on the 16th, I don't, I mean, that, I mean...
Okay.
Yeah, if it's just one person going, I would be in favor of keeping the 16th as the date, as opposed to movement everybody around, so.
Okay, will do. Thanks for the feedback.
All right, so I guess that was city managers' report.
Technically a public hearing item.
Yes, it is. Sheri, any public comment online?
There is not.
All right. Commission calendar items?
Oh, Sheri?
Yes.
Yeah, the 11th. I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have to, the ribbon cutting that I scheduled, yeah, we will need to.
Yep, we'll get it reassigned.
Yes.
All right, any other calendar items?
Move to adjourn.
I would second.
All right, have a first and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Have a good night, everyone.
All right, nonopposed, passes five zero. Thank you, everyone.